Welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. Meeting has been properly posted. Ms. Larson, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Gamble.
President.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
We are all in attendance.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Community comment period. Participants need to come forward to the mic at the table and state your name and address. Statements limited to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comments. If the community comments related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or a question that does not relate to an agenda item per board policy, administrative rule 8300. Would anyone like to make a comment? Yes, sir, step forward. Good evening.
My name is Leroy Lewandowski, and I hope you people can see that I'm talking into the mic, and this is where you should be doing so that I can hear you. Isn't it nice and clear?
Yes.
I couldn't even hear you due to Pledge of Allegiance. I've got hearing aids, one of the most expensive hearing aids, and you people are destroying my will to come here. Well, in a way, I'm here because I'm interested in getting Southview through to my neighborhood. You people have taken 10 acres. You're planting corn in it. You're not using it. First of all, when Ben Franklin School was on 76th Street, this institution was too stupid. I don't know who was there in charge, but to let children become carbon monoxide poisoned. They had carbon monoxide poisoned twice because of a bad furnace. Now, why wouldn't they just buy a whole new furnace at the time? So you guys did a, not you people, but this institution, then made a quick twist around and took that property where Ben Franklin School is right now. That was slated to be the local park for children, playground. We don't have one now anymore because somehow you thought people didn't, whoever was here, and I hope I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but the institution did that. They took it, then they bought the county land, part of the county gave them the land, and so it's still, we still got that road closed. I'm looking forward to go through. And what's going on at Pleasant View, the city is going to pay $731,000 to put that road through, and I think we should do that with Southview. But the problem is, and recently I see the squad car even checking on all those cars that are in the driveways and everything else, and I think I talked to you, Dr. Miller, about that, and nothing has happened. I feel that somehow we ought to get the funds to open up that road, and the north side of the road could be like a car, a kind of a park for people to walk and sit down, walk their dogs in the neighborhood. We don't have a playground. I have a picture of the area if anybody wants to look. The red line in there is where I'd like to see the road go through. So would you want to look at that closer?
That's fine, I'll see.
It just seems a shame that right now, the neighborhood has changed from old people like me, and there's young children going in there. And my road, Winston Way, is becoming pretty busy, and there's a lot of people that even bring their kids to school, and then they drive right through the stop sign, and it's dangerous. We need a big, that road, Southview, is a collector road, and you got it closed down to raise corn. Ridiculous. You paid $250,000 for it. You bought 13 acres next door, you bought 270 acres out further on 92nd and Ryan Road. You must have money. I like the idea that you're looking forward to expansion sometime. I think it's good. I don't like to see my money spent, but I don't have any choice. It's a good, it's good. It's 271 acres, you can put two schools there, two high schools, but that's good. It's a nice, pretty property, and I believe the Catholic Church owned that at one time, so it's nice. But I'm here, and I want people to understand that that road must go through. They're doing it with Pleasant View, they're putting that road through. That was a mistake to put that building there. You know, closed in, and they're trying to open it up, and the city's doing it because you, this institution, doesn't pay any attention to what the citizens want and what, how to do something decent. I'm a retired GM and engineer, so, and I'm 93 years old. I'm a Korean War veteran, and I work out of Powell's baseball park.
Thank you, sir.
And don't forget, get closer to that mic, each one of you. You can hear me better.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Would anyone else like to make a comment? Hearing them, we'll move on. Close the community comment session. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Witkowski. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any school board announcements from members?
I'm wondering if we are set for the state convention, if, do we have somebody on board to do the, to do, do we have anybody on board to do the board resolutions? We do, okay. Just curious as to who was planning on going? I guess I can check what we saw.
And for the upcoming school board calendar, we have a Board of Education workshop on January 13th at 6:00 PM here in the ECC, a regular board meeting on January 13th at 7:00 PM here in the ECC, and a regular board meeting on January 27th, also here at the ECC, at 6:00 PM. I had a made our district administrator update from Dr. Miller.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'd like to begin this evening by sharing some very good fiscal news. Following the resolution of the board to refinance our bond, Mr. Millsler closely monitored the market conditions and successfully refinanced our bond at an interest rate of 1.25%. This rate will provide our school district with a total savings of $2,732,000. Thank you, Mr. Millsler, for your astute attention to this matter. We're completing our 14th week of school and continuing to keep our focus on providing highly effective instructional program for our students. This past month, Dr. Reuters surveyed our virtual families to obtain feedback on how we're doing. This new data indicates that we have had growth in our overall satisfaction across 4K to 12. Parents indicate that the minor actions that we took in October have yielded overall improvements to the virtual environment for their child. One of the highest rated areas by our parents was the quality of the learning program, yielding an overall 90% satisfied or extremely satisfied rating. This new feedback tells us that we do need to continue to keep our focus on communication and classroom teachers providing student feedback. We'll continue to seek monthly feedback from our parents, and we will continue to improve our virtual program. At the end of October, we surveyed our middle school and high school virtual families to determine if they'd like to return to in-person learning. Using that data, we are now planning for the return of a number of our middle school and high school students. November was a month of extremely highs and lows in our positive case rate of COVID-19. On November 7th, our high school hit the 3% metric and was virtual for two weeks. Since then, our positive case rate has been declining, and many of our metric levels have been returning to where they were in late September. The reason for this is not entirely clear. While the burden rate in the city is slowly declining, we did not anticipate that we would see a low number of cases after Thanksgiving. Recently, two physicians have joined our medical advisory team to discuss COVID-19. Dr. Patricia Golden is with Ascension Medical Group and is the medical advisor for the Health Department and the Board of Health, and Dr. Kenneth Strolecki of Children's Wisconsin is also a physician at Franklin Pediatrics. Both of those physicians have joined our group. Today, we met with this team to have an initial discussion of the new CDC quarantine options and to begin discussions about the vaccine. With regard to the new CDC options, the team will continue dialogue around the pros and cons of those options and communicate in the near future if there's going to be any changes at all in our quarantine protocols in the school district. Finally, we have a full agenda this evening, and we're pleased to use our new projection system so everyone can see with clarity the information that we have to share. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Item nine, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Principal action plan update from Forest Park Middle School. Ms. King.
You can come back next month.
All right, hi, everyone. So I am Erin King, and I have Mr. Mizziak and Ms. Ovaya Krollick. I'm so glad you sat where I practiced with my hands, and we're here tonight to provide you an update. Mr. Mizziak's going to start with the, a brief two to three-minute overview of our board report, which you were provided. I will then guide us through a little simulation modeling activity, and Ms. Ovaya Krollick will end this evening. You will get more handouts and some markers to use at your own discretion, and I will turn it over to Mr. Mizziak.
What's that? Very conscious of my volume level. I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity to share the work that we're doing at Forest Park. I'll go through our board report and highlight for you some of our improvement efforts and the strategic actions we're taking at Forest Park to make it a better place to learn and a better place to work. You can see on the first page of the report, we detail two of our efforts, one to cultivate teacher collective efficacy and two to build student self-efficacy. Toward the end of the first page are the actions we are taking in these two areas. This year, we are working with our teams to help them understand their capacity. We're supporting teams to develop a shared belief that through their collective actions and efforts, they can overcome challenges, solve problems, and reach intended outcomes. To accomplish this, we've supported teams in developing their team norms, routines, and understanding the stages of effective learning communities. Part of supporting teams is better understanding their core work and developing a common understanding of what we want students to learn and what the expectations for that learning looks like at different levels of understanding. Our goal is when we have discussions around outcomes, we are striving for a durable understanding that students can transfer from the classroom to their lives outside of school. I would also like to highlight for you on the first page, our work to support students in building their self-efficacy. This work includes supporting students to orient themselves in their learning and builds on our learning from two years ago related to feedback and our learning from this past year when we engaged in work related to the mindframes. You'll be learning more about orientation during the next part of our presentation. On the third page of the report, you will see our strategic actions to make Forest Park a better place to work. As a part of the improvement process, we worked with our school improvement team, analyzed the data that you can see on pages three and four, and determined areas of focus related to supporting staff recognition and effective feedback. We are currently rounding with staff to help support our two-way communication. During the process, we are meeting with staff, determining for them what is going well, if they have their necessary resources, and if there's any ways that we can better support them. Additionally, to support our two-way communication, we are closing feedback loops. When we provide feedback to teachers, we are following up with teachers to determine how that feedback was received and the next steps teachers will take based on that feedback. The last area of the report I'd like to highlight for you is on the third page, related to how we are recognizing and acknowledging excellent work. In addition to the feedback that we provide that spotlight successes, we have also provided families opportunities to recognize staff for the work that they do and provided staff opportunities to recognize their colleagues. At this point, I'll turn it back to Erin to continue our presentation and take you through the next activity.
All right. So coming to you is a packet of goodies that I'm going to walk you through. So you'll see the first page there. In order to activate some background knowledge, you've heard about these mindframes for visible learning. It was the year, it was our professional development work as an entire district last year, led by Dr. Reuters. So all teachers engaged in this text, and you'll see on this document, it has just a quick overview, and the second paragraph really talked about the way in which we think about our impact is more important than what we do with each day. To highlight some of the mindframes, it talks about, I'm an evaluator of my impact on student learning. I see assessment as informing my impact in the next steps. There's collaboration, our belief that we are change agents and that all students can improve, striving for challenge, feedback, building relationships and trust. On the next page, also to activate a little bit more of your background knowledge, are the social emotional competencies. We spent a year of learning last year around these signature practices, and you'll see those five core SEL, social emotional learning competencies. So if you set that aside as well, part of our key work is making sure that each year we don't start over. We have coherence, if you will, from year to year, and we build on our learning. So it's important to remember the learning that we've had and that we continue to build and build those connections with staff. The third page provides a little bit of information about orientation. I'm going to give you just a minute to read those first two paragraphs to briefly introduce what orientation is. You'll see that orientation is really defined as a learner's ability to clarify those expectations for learning, to understand where they are now, where they are going, and what's next for their learning. On the table at the bottom, it goes into a little bit more and has some key questions that learners and students, teachers can ask themselves and make sure that we continue to build student self-efficacy. So an activity that we did early on in the school year and that we're going to do with you here, if you turn to that next page, there's an infographic for you. It's important that staff synthesize our work and see how it all relates. We don't want things in isolation. We don't want social emotional learning over here, teaching and learning over here, mindframe work and how we approach our work over here. That will become very fragmented, not only for staff, but also for students. So you'll see in this infographic that this pair of teachers, we asked all staff to synthesize their work to see where the connections are between the 10 mindframes for visible learning, our social emotional competencies, and orientation, that first step of student self-efficacy. So you'll see some key questions here with orienting to learning in the middle. Where am I? Where am I going and what's next around? Some great things in yellow that signify how the social emotional competencies tie in, and also different mindframes. There are two other examples behind the first example, and then a blank sheet of paper. We are going to ask that you build or build off of one of the options there to see what connections you can see between orientation, social emotional learning, and those mindframes. And we're going to ask that you do that right now, and we will walk around with some colors if you so choose, or you can just use a pen, but we'd like to see and give you the opportunity to engage in just a small portion of the learning that our staff has engaged in in order to transfer that learning to our students.
Okay, I don't understand. What are we doing? I mean, I'm working off of this page, this one, that one, what?
So you're going to take that blank one.
Oh.
You have a blank sheet of paper, and then you're going to take that standard. See what you see between these three documents here. And even if you can see these three, it's automatically between this one. This one and this one. So this one talks about like, where am I going? Where am I now? How does that relate to my self-management? My stress management, maybe my goal setting.
So we're kind of using this to decide this. So what do, what are you expecting from us?
What are we expecting from you? I want you to better understand.
Where am I going?
Where am I? So you can, you can make something, or you can build on what it means, or simply chat with each other, like, what am I seeing out here that the teachers did? Your goal for you to be better on standards. And you simply start to dissect it and see what different aspects of learning are coming together.
Thank you.
What are you seeing?
I see this. It doesn't say anything. I have way too little.
I think I'm almost done with what Mr. Mizziak.
I'm following, I'm listening.
Where are we now? So how does that relate? If I'm just sitting in class, it's not basically where am I going?
I gotta use a pen. But this one's. You know, I see circles, but he's in her book, right?
I like it, but it's a lot to.
Okay, the key thing that you did that had gotten somewhat engaged is, I'm trying to determine a book that I'm going to read. Now I actually have something that's going on that I can start applying to.
These things that are important to learning. This is important, this is important, this is important.
So like, whatever my goal is on this, if I don't understand what I'm doing, I'm going to have a hard time getting there? Is that? So your goal, your goal is to do something.
I'm not in school.
I'm sorry. How do they tell that?
So then we, that's one assessment, right? So we have to know where.
So this is called orientation.
So I put orientation in now.
I guess, I think it gets complicated. Five is.
You forgot.
And that didn't necessarily all.
This is, this is our. Go ahead. Continue, continue. Okay.
More important learning.
So your goal right now is to include and make a connection between these pieces. So I know where I'm going. I don't, I don't know where you're going. I don't know where, 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 I don't know where we're trying to get to, so. Go ahead. No, that was my microphone vibration. I don't know what this is supposed to be doing. So our new work for this year. So their work this. The work that we did.
Everything. But the mindframes.
Somewhere I saw something that said about, I'm not, don't merely do the best that you can, but that's where it brought up the challenge thing.
Yeah.
I kind of don't understand that. If a child is doing the very best that they can, what's a challenge going to be? Strive for challenge. So the example of Utah, I'm trying to pick out a book to read, and, okay, I'm going to pick out this book right now, but eventually I want you to. I do better with concrete stuff. Up here. So you're not talking about meeting that challenge with your first book, but somewhere down the road. Okay. Okay. I'm on board. No. Good. Other than to explain to you that this is what my mind looks like?
It's complex.
Yeah, it's very complex.
Complex, complex. So, I mean, 10 is a lot to keep around your head.
My brain doesn't think so.
I got 3 and 5, so you got 10, 5, and.
I was never one for.
At any one moment, which of these things is supposed to be thinking about?
Okay. What you're teaching them is different, but you're teaching them the strategy of moving to the challenge.
I couldn't even begin to say, I'm sure these numbers mean something to somebody, but, yeah, I, I'd have to spend time.
Yeah, good.
Whereas this one actually has it, right? This is actually a mind frame. Are there, are there a ten of them? Eight, nine, I wanted nine. Are they supposed to be 10?
What are the minds, what is the mind, the strip, what is it correlated? That probably.
Did they do this by themselves, or is it, what's a team? What is a team?
Probably be good.
Because I see, I see the difference in numbers.
Okay. All right. Wow. That's a lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And this orientation is just one aspect. How many of these are there? Oh, she kind of identified a report.
This is the actuals.
Wow. And then, so after one more year, they're fully trained.
About the book.
About the book.
The switch would be.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just kind of concerned as far as how that's going to reflect overall at the end of the year. Because we always talked about, well, it's going to be really hard to measure, we should be able to measure it somehow.
That makes sense.
Every day, every teacher should know 25 kids' paths.
Sorry, I'll use your color.
Where each of these 25 kids.
Oh, really?
Okay, oh, colors, okay.
I know.
Yeah, I kind of went through here and I was looking at this and, you know, picked out a couple of other key points.
I like it. I need more time to sit.
Yeah, yeah, as I went through, I was like, oh, I use a blue pen and it matches.
I need a whole professional moment, Dan. Not just 10 minutes.
Highlighted what I wrote.
30 seconds to do it.
I like it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you all so much for engaging in this activity. We want to reassure you that there is no perfect answer, right? I heard a lot, is this right? Does this look right? This is, the great thing about synthesizing work is that you really have an opportunity to analyze it and think about, how does this connect for you? How does it make it meaningful for you? So, we all understand the importance of synthesizing our learning to create a deeper understanding and connections, and that's what we wanted you to have an opportunity to do tonight. So, thank you for that. As we stated before, we spent the first couple of months learning all about orientation, but what comes next? If you look at the last page of this packet, I see some of you like, oh, no, not another activity. No, we're done with the activities, I promise. You will see brief descriptors for activation and collaboration, which will be the next two steps of developing student efficacy. Within activation, there's a focus on dispositions and strategies to help learners persevere. And this is aligned to social-emotional competencies, specifically self-management and self-awareness. With collaboration, we're really pushing our students' thinking through meaningful conversations and respectful dialogue, which we know aligns to relationship skills and social awareness. As you can see, it's important for us to continue to build connections through our work in order to authentically integrate that into the classrooms. We know that building on efficacy and connecting that to mindframes and social-emotional learning competencies impact daily student learning and experiences at Forest Park, so that every moment of every day is an opportunity for student growth. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Oh, I would love to switch with Erin.
I guess I have a question. So, is the mindframes one program and this, this piece a program, and then social-emotional learning is a different program? And now you're connecting up? I mean, did we, like, where does this come from, I guess?
Thank you. So, mindframe is learning that we engaged in last year through our professional development. Social-emotional competencies, we started last year as well, and that's just helping us create, I, I think, a well-rounded environment for the whole child. And I'm so sorry, the, the third one. Oh, and then what we're doing today with collective efficacy, that's ongoing work. That is something that we've been doing at Forest Park since I got there last year, but even before then. This is just a continuation of that. I think the importance for us is that oftentimes people look at these things and they think, oh, this is one program, this is one book, this is, and the reality is, this is about a, a student experience. This is about impacting their day-to-day life and just helping us grow as educators to serve them better.
And it's really grounded in a lot of research, what we're bringing forward. And Dr. Burder could speak to that because he does that research for us, but these theoretical approaches to teaching and learning are, are very much grounded in research.
And is this efficacy of learning, is that more tied to the mindframes than it is, or is it standalone as body research?
Efficacy is, collective efficacy and student efficacy is the result of doing the right work every day. So, the mind framework is steeped in hundreds of years of educational research, and the question is, when we look at the effect size, collective efficacy again is the result of pulling the right levers at the right time and meeting kids' needs. And when we work through the 10 mindframes about understanding our impact on students, and then students understand their impact on the work, the result is efficacy. One of the ways we go about that is through the orientation literature that Mrs. King and the team provided. When we think about, kids have to be aware, just like we do as adults, where am I in this process? And where am I going? And then what is the support and scaffolds and my own ownership of that? And so, that, that's the theoretical approach. The mindframes is about evidence-based research instructional practices that we should be utilizing every day. We know what works in education, it's a matter of using the right tool at the right time. And that's the work that the middle school has dove deeper in. It's last year, you remember from multiple coherence plan updates around the Better Place to Learn Lane, we discussed our professional development plan year-long around SCL and understanding the 10 mindframes which lead to better evidence-based practices every day. Mrs. King's team is just going deeper into that now year three of our coherence plan, specific to the, the previous learning.
So, year three is the last, so we're all trained up now, or?
Our, our district-wide, every teacher, every specialist and principal went through the text study. Actually, I provided you that, that text, so we'll, we'll have a debrief on that one after the meeting. But with, everyone went through a, a, a study of that text last year, the research and the practices we know work in education. And then per-site level, they worked on how they're operationalizing. So, tonight's highlight is how the middle school is operationalizing that work this year now, after the global learning.
Thank you.
I have a question on, more like, the map data and the map scores versus the forward exam scores. I know they're different tests, but are we finding, are we finding that students sort of dipped with the move to virtual in the spring? And then are they recovering? What are we finding, actually, with the students' learning and, and assessments? And I know the assessment report is, is talked about tonight, too, so maybe Nick can help with that, too.
I'm sure Nick will talk more. If I know Nick and data, he's going to talk about it. I would talk about, we know which is limited, right? We have the, the fall math data, we didn't have spring math data, there, everything was shut down in the spring. So, we know what NWEA, which is the math assessment, what they predicted, or what they stated, I don't know if predicted is right, worrying if I'm wrong, they stated that there would be about a 50% learning loss in math and about a 30% in reading. And so, when we look at our building across the board in our district, our building actually increased in reading, and we did about what predict, was predicted in math. As for are we recovering or where are we at, that's exactly the question we're trying to answer every day, and which is why we have built urgency in our building of, yes, there's a pandemic, but we have more reason now than ever because our kids need us. Our kids will be going to high school, and what we do matters, it will impact the rest of their life, so we better be coming towards each day and being able to answer these questions of where, where am I now, where am I going, what's next? We have math coming up in January again, which will be helpful for us. Our teams of teachers have identified key standards to be able to track, standards and skills to ensure that students are making growth over the year, and that's based within their classrooms and their PLCs, which is why our team and building believe that together we can make that collective impact, it's so important. So, if I don't answer, if Nick doesn't answer what you need, let me know. And then I'll give him a talk.
And Ms. King teed that up well. We'll, we'll talk more in a little bit about the overall impact across the district and what Ms. King described at the middle schools, what we were seeing also at the lower elementary. So, we'll talk more about that in a little bit.
Thanks. And how are we organized by teams? Because that's, it's all about the team, right? Is it at the grade level, or is it my house, or is it my subject matter, or is it?
A little bit of both. There's lots of teams. A grade-level teacher is probably, is on a grade-level content team, but they also have their health partner, so that health partner, they share the same 60 students about. The elective teachers have teams within their departments, and then they also work collaboratively across elective teams. When we talk about growth over time, we're generally talking about grade-level content teams. So, a sixth-grade literacy team, or a sixth-grade math-science team.
That's where it has to happen in terms of movement, like, because your goal is to increase the percentage, so that's, that's the team that matters. I guess they all matter, but, okay.
We're not just helping you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. That was informative.
Thank you.
And fun. Our next one's early college credit request approval from Mr. Volo.
I hope you're all doing well. My board update was so fun last month, I came back again just to see you all, so you'll see Erin in January. As I indicated in my message, so we had one application that was not on our memo last month. So, this represents a student who has chosen courses at two schools in order to make sure they can get one or two courses in their schedule. So, again, the courses are ones that we do not offer issues or contemporary, or excuse me, comparable courses of. Therefore, you know, we don't have a reason to say no or a statutory obligation that can allow us to say no. So, with that being said, I would kindly ask that we approve this application.
So moved.
Let me ask for the motion first. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the early college credit request. Have a motion from Ms. Wackowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, everybody.
Next is our communications update from Mr. Kafka.
This is King is going to sing for you.
Thank you. Jake has a great voice.
Lucky to draw.
Questionnaire themes that came up earlier? All right, everybody?
Is that working? There we go. A little loud. Try, first one getting to present on the TV, so I welcome that. Good evening again. Communications update, we do these typically twice a year. We did not unfortunately get to meet in the spring, so I would like to kind of bring you up to speed with where we've been since last December when I did a communications update. This slide deck I am going to send to you after this. I'm going to try to move as quickly as I can through it, just so if I go too fast, please know that I will send this to you, and I want to do some question-answer at the end. Three parts I want to go through tonight is just a review of our communication channels, and I've also pulled some analytics or some metrics about how we communicate with our different audiences. I want to do an update on the communication plan that expires here coming up in June and talk about what the next steps are for refreshing that plan. And then the third part is just communication that we've specifically been doing in response to COVID-19. So, the first part again is just review of our current communication channels. Our district newsletter, we're all familiar with it. This goes out weekly. This is on the, built on the Smore platform. Smore is a website that we started using around the time that we shut down in the spring. We currently, at the time in the spring, we're not doing a weekly newsletter, and in order to kind of streamline our messaging and make things more concise for our families, we decided to do a weekly newsletter, and that has just continued on because we've had so much information to share. This has been a consistent platform for us, for Franklin Public Schools. It usually includes a weekly message from Dr. Miller, health information from our nurses, our reopening doors planning, you've seen our pause day information from early November, and now our weekly dashboard as we go, as we continue through COVID time, just to update our families on, on what are our COVID responses in the district. This is an example of what the metrics look like behind the scenes of the Smore platform. So, this is just one issue from November 6th. They, it's broken down into various aspects there. I'm going to go into those in a little bit more detail on the next slides, but I share this with you so that you can understand what we're looking for once these go out and how we look at the metrics to make our issues better for, for the information that our families are looking for. One of the pieces that is important in these metrics is that it gives us kind of a time study. So, when the issue, the digital issue goes out to our families and people click on it and open it and look at it, this bar graph that's created, if, if I was live in the site right now, I could mouse over that, and it would tell me how many people looked at it for less than a minute, how many people for a minute, two to five minutes, five to 10 minutes, or 10 or more minutes. I'm kind of aiming for that mid-range. If somebody's less than a minute, they clicked it and at least opened it, maybe scanned it very quickly, maybe looked at some of the headers or headlines. If they were in there for about a minute, maybe they just grabbed what they needed and moved on. That two to five, five to 10 means they're reading, they're watching a video, they're actually digesting the information that we're sending to them. This is just total views of our newsletters since July, so what I'm looking for here is kind of above that 4,000 views line because we send this out to 5,905 student families, meaning that if there's a parent one, a parent two email address, and some of our split-family situations, a parent three, a parent four, we're looking to hopefully hit above that 4,000 line. If it doesn't hit that 4,000 line, then I'm looking at reasons possibly why. Some things I've discovered in just kind of tracking that, the time of day that the newsletter goes out is important. We try to get it out as early as we can on a Friday, and we tend to get higher views. If it goes out later in the day, it gets less views. People are going into their weekends, probably not paying attention to it. The November 25th issue, as an example, that was the day before we went on Thanksgiving break, so I got a lot of out-of-office kickback emails when we sent that one out, rightfully so, people probably took the day off. So, so things like that that kind of weigh in. And then we look at, are we putting too much information in, not enough information? Some of the other metrics we get are, when do people come back to the newsletter? So, this bar graph represents the five issues that went out in October. The blue is the total views overall. The red is day one. The orange is day two, green is day three, and the kind of darker orange is, is day four. This shows, even though it's a significant drop, this shows that people are coming to the newsletter or coming back to the newsletter later to possibly look at information. The fact that those are in the hundreds on day two, three, four, is telling me that people find our newsletter of value. There's something there that they're coming to therefore for the first time, or either coming back to. When we get into link clicks here in a minute, that you'll see some more information about that. This is the page that tells us, this is just a sample from one of the issues. So, if we put links in there, so the first link is an example, it's a, it's a long link about Google Docs, Google Drawings, that's actually to our COVID-19 dashboard. So, you can see 1,222 people clicked on that and looked at that from the newsletter. That's really high. And that is, that is the item in most of our newsletters now that is getting the most clicks because people are curious. Are we in the green for our building, in the yellow? What are things looking like? Other things that people, other links that people will click on are the meal interest form if they have to arrange a meal for pickup if they're at home, or if their child is at home. or if their child is at home. The attendance form, Chromebook troubleshooting for some of our virtual families. These are some of the things that tend to trend higher. And then we have things that we put out, in this example, we had put out a joint release from the Franklin Health Department and Franklin Public Schools. That got a lot of views. That actually got, there's, it's in there twice. So it actually got, it's the second and third one, so about 1,500 or 1,600 views. Which is great. This is a piece that our community, our families have come to rely on that we send to them. And then they're accessing other information from these newsletters. The staff Franklin Find newsletter is also built on the Smore platform. We did this bi-weekly last year, switched to weekly in the spring, just again to have consistent messaging for the staff on all the changes that were happening when we were having pause days and what learning looked like and if we were going to be coming back or not coming back. Usually a brief message from Dr. Miller. Department updates from all the various departments, teaching and learning, human resources, student services. We put our PD schedules in here for staff so they know to expect this and to access this the week before a professional development day. Our insurance changes that we went through recently, teaching and learning planning updates. And, and overall, this has really become a part of the culture of our staff knowing when to receive information. And this was part of one of our goals of being able to not have it be information overload for our staff. Not having separate emails from all the directors, but instead trying to compact this into one place so that staff knew when to expect it. We send this out to 900 staff across the district. So if you're looking at kind of two thirds worth of clicks or opens or readership or viewership, that's around 600, that red line. And we're hitting that pretty consistently. Again, time of day when that goes out tends to be pretty valuable to look at. And that just depends, sometimes we're shoring up some of those communications at the last minute. For example, today's didn't go out till closer to three o'clock. I'm very curious to watch that one because I find when it does go out around noon, staff is able to access it during a lunch or a prep and then be aware of whatever it is that we're sharing. I do plan to survey the staff as part of the communication plan refresh, just to kind of get some feedback from them on, on how that's working. Our build, our building bulletins, as we got into the shutdown in the spring. Prior to then, we were using Google Documents as our building newsletters. We'd received some anecdotal feedback from parents that Google Documents weren't showing up correctly on phones. The Smore platform offered a fix for that in that if, if we send it out using Smore, it form fits to the phone. It opens nicely on the computer screen if somebody's using a tablet. So I worked with the secretaries and they transitioned to their building bulletins right before we were, we went into shutdown. We ended up discontinuing our building bulletins during shutdown, just so that we had consistent messaging from the district since the buildings weren't open. The metrics for this year though, that the secretaries have continued to use Smore, and again, I'll share this with you so you can dive into this a little bit more. This is just viewership and I listed the number of students that are at each building. And so over time, the, the building newsletters are pretty much the main way that families are getting their information weekly on Mondays from the buildings. So this has become a real good source for us as a communication channel for, for getting that messaging out there. A lot of times we end up reinforcing something that went out in the district newsletter on Friday or we even link back to the district newsletter on Friday. And we're seeing that there is some cross clicking going on because we'll put the link in there to the district newsletter from Friday. And we'll see that that might have some high clicks if people miss something. Forest Park and Franklin High School, you can just kind of eyeball that. I did notice visually just putting this together, it was kind of the same ebb and flow. You think about August and September as schools getting started, a lot of information was being sent to parents about what virtual is going to look like, how things were going to run, what reopening doors was going to look like. So a lot of high readership. And then there's just some ebbs and flows depending on what might be going on during the school year where things are a little lower and tend to creep back up. Another communication channel for us is the Opening Door City Newsletter. This goes out in print. Color, full color, front and back of a piece of paper, goes out with the city newsletter to 14,000 homes. This is a community facing channel, meaning that we try to do more community focused stories in here around our finances. We got a great story from tonight. Thank you, Mr. Millsor. So that'll be going in the next one. The health, this overall health in the community, impact that the district is making. We usually include a message from the board president or just something about what the board is working on. And so that goes out to again, 14,000 homes. Some that are not obviously, that don't have children in the, in the district. So that's a good piece for us as well. Our district social media channels, up till last year, we had Facebook and Twitter. We added Instagram last year, more visual, just Instagram tends to be just pictures. Been pretty consistent with putting information out on those channels. Obviously we have, we don't have as many events this year, but our, our schools are still running sports and athletics. So we're trying to reshare some of that where we can. Some behind the scenes of that, Facebook tends to get the most engagement for us. This is just a behind the scenes of Facebook's metrics platform. And this is showing page likes. How many people have liked the Franklin School District page over currently the last year? And then I go back and I show over two years. So we've grown about 1,000 page likes in two years, about 500 or so each year. So that's just to show growth over time. Why do we care about page likes? When someone likes the page, they then, if we post something, it shows up in their feed as something that they have shown interest in. So it helps us just to continue to spread more of our content out and more about what we're doing as a school district. So it's good to see that that is growing. If people were de-liking our page or taking their likes away, you would see that go down. Some other behind the scenes that I found kind of interesting, just who's, who, who are we reaching? When we say reach, the number of people that see our content. This stat was created based on, on our, our page data. 72% of people that access this information are women, 28% are men. And then you can see the age breakdown there too. So if we're talking parents' age in the 25 to 34, 35 to 44, that middle section is kind of the biggest. So that's who we're really reaching through Facebook. This was a snapshot behind the scenes from Instagram. I found this one interesting. Since starting the Instagram page last year, we have just under 500 followers. Again, people that follow us then get our content when we post it. This was an age and gender breakdown, similar to Facebook, kind of that 25 to 54 range. The graphic that's kind of moving on the lower right, this shows in a given day when our followers are online. So how this helps us is when will I post that content that I know it will get the eyeballs? So the darkest blue is, is when people are online. The white is when people really aren't online. White is in the middle of the, or in the morning-ish when people are probably working or at school. And then the darker parts in the, you know, if you think about somebody waking up and maybe they're scrolling their, their phone in bed, they might be looking at stuff at 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM. I've been posting things that early and it tends to get a lot of attraction or a lot of engagement when, when, when we do that. So that's just something that we're using to our advantage. Our district website is for static content. This is where information is parked for reference. It's updated as needed. It's mobile friendly. So if anyone pulls it up on their phone, it'll form fit to their phone. Reinforces our district messaging. We've been using the news feed more this year as we've posted our district newsletters. I've been dropping them in that district news area so that there's current and relevant information. So if anybody just coming to our front page is looking for something, they'll see the newest newsletter and be able to access it from there. I am exploring the idea of, and this was one of the goals too, of, of having an app for the district. The final site platform is our website and they do offer the ability to have an app that would take the same content that we're already putting into our website and just package it more as an app that, that parents or community members could access on their phone too. So researching that a little bit as well. And school messenger. School messenger is our broadcast tool. This is what we use to directly contact families. If we have to send them a phone call blast, if we have to send them an email. If you've been the bearer of any of those with my voice, I apologize. But that, that is our mass messaging system. I'm going to talk more about that when we talk about our COVID response. But that has been heavy, heavy use here during our COVID response. And they give us analytics as well. This is a snapshot behind the scenes when we send a blast out. If there's ever a problem where we hear from a parent, I didn't get this email, I didn't get this phone call. We get an exact listing of what went out to who, when, what time, so we can backtrack. If an email address had a character incorrect or a phone number was wrong, we can, we can fix that and improve that. So that's all the communication channels and how we get the information out. Part two here is an update on our communication plan. So this was in your board packets. This is the same communication plan you've reviewed in the past, just to kind of set the tone. There's three columns here. There's internal communication, how we internally communicate with our staff. Second column is external communication for parents. And then the third column is external communication for larger audiences, the community as a whole. So last year when I did my update for you, I kind of followed this flow where I was going to give you kind of a status update. Green means we're working on, it's become maybe a part of our regular practice or we possibly attained that tactic that was part of the, the strategy. Orange is that we might be researching it and looking into how we can best do it. And red is maybe we're generating ideas or for some reason that goal, that tactic has not been employed yet. So in this first one, I'll just throw all three of these up there and I'm going to move through these quickly again, just to keep us moving. But there's a question and answer at the end if you have a question on one of these specifically. Analyze and improve the Franklin Find, we already talked about that. Building an Intranet, IntraNet sites. Let me jump to the next screen here. One of the things with not overwhelming our staff with too much information that we've been exploring is building an Intranet. This is a little sample preview of it. I built this over the summer. We haven't invoked it yet. We're still kind of creating how this is going to roll out, hopefully here in the spring. But what this would do would be allow us as staff to house the information better for our staff. As I mentioned, we send out the Franklin Find bi-weekly to our staff to avoid emails of, hey, where was this, where was that, or avoid phone calls. We're trying to better kind of house that information in one place. So this eventually may take over a Franklin Find newsletter. This might be something that staff can access daily with whatever newest updates there are and, and we're, we're working on building that out. This goal, oops, phone flipped there. There we go. Or yeah, this is a strategy, I should say, and the different tactics included. I'll leave that up there for a second. These were ones that we had kind of in the green all last year. So these are ones that are still part of our communication and, and what we're doing. With the exception of the very first one that says continue onsite office hours. Last year, our directors made a point to schedule office hours in the buildings. Obviously this year with trying to mitigate person-to-person contact, that has not continued, but we're still doing things virtually. So the actual onsite part of that is, is changed to virtual. Specific to parents. Throw these up there. So I mentioned kind of investigating the parent communication app. Feel like we're working on that right now. The other green ones I've already spoken to in some other capacity. The orange one in the middle says implement a parent info campaign about the tools used for parent-to-parent, school-to-parent, district-to-parent communication. Then working on ideas and, and structure for that and what that looks like. And this also ties into one of the red ones, determine and deploy a consistent number of teacher classroom communications. That's one that we're trying to figure out how to best guide our staff because everybody communicates in various ways and how to best, what, what does that look like? That's what, it's kind of, it's, it's in, it's being talked about, but it hasn't really moved forward yet. And then the second red one was investigate a second annual opportunity for face-to-face parent communication. That is obviously on hold right now in light of everything with COVID. This is just a snapshot of some of the different work that I do that was one of the goals on the previous page or one of the tactics rather. Being a part of the safety committee overseeing any crisis and communication protocols that we have. As we've been building these processes in response to COVID, we're constantly building new templates for messaging, new workflows. And so I'm doing my best to archive that information in the event we have to continue with COVID response first, for the time being or to use if, if anything else comes our way. So really trying to build preset messages that we can send out where needed. And then the safety committee work, obviously preparing for any other crises that could potentially happen. This goal and strategy, these were all green last year as well, and these have continued as part of our work. The IAP2 framework, in case you forgot what that means, that stands for the International Association of Public Participation. This gets at how do we best prepare our content for the community for public consumption? It gets in, there's a whole five step process as part of that. That is part of the work when we build, as an example, the reopening doors webpage. We try to think about how our, our community, our families are going to best access this information. And that comes from the structure of that framework. This one having to do with the district's identity, I'll throw these up there. Identifying the district's key differentiators, establishing the district's key messages. These are things that have been in motion and part of our, our working on or attained category since last year. Consistently using our branding assets, our colors, our logos. We're working on Ben, with Ben Franklin right now to kind of establish their mascot, their logo, their color scheme, just to kind of give them an identity. They've, they've kind of gone back and forth between some different mascots the last few years, so we're working on that. The orange one there, the create print and video materials that tell our district story, that probably could be more green. I do try to find those stories and capture them in video where we can. We did five great impact stories, literally right before COVID hit that we put out about the great things we were doing. And then it felt like those kind of got a little bit lost because of, of the transition to, to at-home learning. But this year we did the Veterans Day story where Sabre Manufacturing students created in a very nice metal flag piece that they donated to a local veterans organization. So we try to capture those video stories and put those out through our social media channels where we can. This is just a reminder of our, our core values, just some imagery, the icons, our better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community, district key messages. I think this is the last one. Again, external communication, how do we get information out? We have an external mailing list when we need it. We feature our community partners on social media. We had some great, in fact, they're on our webpage right now. Our students are building a home in a local subdivision as part of a partnership with Tim O'Brien. So we try to feature those things on social media or through our communication channels where we can. We have a superintendent chat tomorrow, actually. Dr. Miller does a virtual chat with some parents, just to kind of keep getting parent involvement and feedback. We're highlighting the foundation's work. They've been doing a lot of great digital activities and virtual ways to, to raise money this year. And I'm a very much a part of helping them to promote that. So that's the communication plan. What is next for that? We look at a reset. As I mentioned, this ends in June. About 85 to 90% of the plan is completed, so we reset. We look at those tactics, we look at those strategies, what makes sense. I'll be involving a board member or two or three to kind of get some feedback as we do that. Between now and the end of the school year, that, that communication plan refresh will come together. We'll look at how we're engaging our internal and our external audiences. And we'll probably keep the structure of the plan the same and just update and, and alter some of those tactics and strategies as we go into the next three-year plan. So I plan to bring that to you. I drafted the three-year plan before the start of the next school year. So I'm just sharing that with you so you can expect that. And the last part, COVID communication work. I'm going to skip that because this ties in. As we did, as we got into the start of the school year, we really tried to brand reopening doors and kind of cement that as a, as an image, as imagery and as things that we could kind of rally around a webpage so that people understood when we were sending information about schools reopening, what, what that was. This was an image that we tried to create so that our families could understand the virtual, the, the learning options that they would have. Whether it be in-person and virtual and kind of what that looks like. It makes much more sense now that we're on the other side of it. But trying to relay that information early on to our families just through print wasn't working. So tried to infographic that a little bit so that families could better understand that. The start of our school year, our first five days, as you remember, was altered slightly. So again, we tried to infographic that. Tried to, and through our newsletters, we were putting out constant communication about keeping your children home if there's symptoms, continuing to do that. So that's just some examples of where that branding carried over into some specific pieces. The actual webpage, we made it very simple. It was our normal web URL slash reopen. It's still there. We're still using it. We're updating latest communications on the right side that have to do with anything reopening doors. As the high school shut down and then reopened, that information was parked here. Our original planning from board meeting videos, all various types of media. We, we didn't want to just put out one 60-page document that parents would have to read through. We really tried to use different forms of media, video, infographics, short snippets of information. Our FAQ, which I'll talk about here next. We tried to use those things to really have families understand what we were planning for. This is a, a little animation from our FAQ page. So we organized and chunked that information so that parents and, and community members could find exactly what they needed by going to the question and finding the answer. We were constantly updating those. One of the things that made this work very well was this feedback form we created. And in the feedback form, what we were finding early on was a parent would have a question. We would guide them to the FAQ page. Maybe they didn't find the answer. They would email, if they had multiple kids across the district, they were emailing the middle school principal, the high school principal, an elementary school principal. And then we were worried about inconsistent messages coming back from three or four different people. So this form, what we, what we transitioned to was please look at our FAQ page. If you don't find the answer, fill out this form. Check off the areas or this, or the schools that this pertains to. And so when they filled out this form and they, they could also fill out a And so when they filled out this form, and they could also fill out a question of what does this relate to, and then put in their question, it went to all those audiences at the same time. And then one person could respond and reply all, so that everybody was on the same page. The way this helped us, though, was by taking those answers and then putting those into the FAQ. So this just became a perpetual cycle of, we got a really great question here from two parents, very similar, here's the answer, okay, let's put that in the FAQ. So then it also kept us consistent with our messaging as well. I already mentioned, we use various media. We use videos. When Dr. Roder was, when we were releasing the virtual learning plan, the video that we put out got a lot of hits. We saw that through our YouTube statistics. We also linked directly to, it's probably because Dr. Roder was in the video. We linked directly to those clips and where people could find that information to try to get them to what they needed as quick as they, as quick as we could. Our COVID-19 dashboard, I designed this from talking with the leadership team on how can we best put this information out weekly. So this is the one that you see all the time now. It's on our website. We update it on Wednesdays and Fridays. This is actually today's. That looks at our trigger points, looks at our cases in the building, our quarantines, and it just gives the community a sense of where we're at. If we have to eventually talk about a school possibly shifting to at-home learning, they'll start to see that through the visuals of this dashboard. Things will start to go yellow and then start to dip into the red. And then the biggest part that I've been a part of is School Messenger, which I mentioned earlier. So I work with the nurses very closely. They get a report from the health department that there is a positive case in the district. They do their contact tracing. So that's the first step, is through a lot of work. They send out information to teachers that might be involved, staff members that might be involved, find out who were close contacts to that case. My part is using Power School and School Messenger. We have templates upon templates upon templates of messages that go out. And then it also phone call blasts and emails to those families saying, your son or your child has been identified as a close contact, these are the next steps you need to take, please check your email for more information. And we finally, as sad as it is, but also good, we have that as a well-oiled machine, just so that we can get that communication out efficiently. So that has been a lot of work this year, just making that run. That is the end of my presentation. These are the three areas we covered, and I'll throw it out to you guys for Q and A. Any questions on any specifics from that? There's a lot of information, I talked very fast, yes?
Are you a one-man show, or, I mean, this is amazing.
Oh, thank you. I, as far as the communications department, yes. I work very closely with Dr. Miller, and we draft communications together, and then I reach out to the other district leaders when we're trying to word things.
There's a whole network of collaboration going on.
Yeah, yeah, big network of collaboration. That's why I said "we" a lot, because it isn't just me, it is kind of pulling the pieces together to make this work.
But I would say that, you know, the talent that Chad has is extremely unique. In many districts, there's probably a graphic designer working and a number of other people doing what he can all do. So we're incredibly lucky to have him doing this work for us.
After, over the years, just my three years, after the several starts and stops we've had in the communication area, over the past year, you've done a tremendous job. We're lucky to have you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
One specific area I'm wondering about, though, is streaming the high school sports. I mean, you didn't talk about that, obviously that's not in the communication plan, someone's doing that.
Yeah, great point, so.
Was that a decision, we're going to do this?
Yeah, Mr. Hein totally took the ball with that, and he figured out the necessary technical components for that to work. And then our athletics director, Jordan Hein, and then he works with, also training the students that were part of our Saber Roar or video production classes. And so he kind of helped coordinate and build teams for that at the high school. So when there's an event, he's able to have a two-person or possibly three-person team that goes, one's running the video camera, another one's running the computer to stream it. We had talked about it, and he just, he took the ball and ran with it. So I was super impressed with everything he did there.
And every event is covered?
Every event for the fall was covered. We're talking about winter, because now winter gets into some logistics, where we might have too many events at the same time, and we might not have enough people. So we're figuring out what winter looks like right now.
Another quick question I have is, how many pages are out there? I mean, I know I like pages, but I know I'm not getting everything, because I must miss a page.
Oh, for Facebook pages you're talking?
Yes, yes.
They're, I don't even know, they're unlimited. Anybody can build a page.
As far as Franklin sits, that Franklin is.
Oh, in terms of Franklin's pages, yes. So we have the district, sorry, I thought you meant just in general.
No.
We have the Franklin Public School District page, which is the one that I run. And then each school does have a page, and so what I've taken to is having, when I post something, I can tag that page, so it also shows up there as well. So if it's something for the middle school, I might post it as the district, but I'll tag the middle school, so it'll also show up there. So as families are on Facebook and they see, oh, there's a Forest Park page, there's a Ben Franklin page, if they like those, they'll get content from there, or they'll get content from us as well.
It doesn't go the other way?
It can, no, it totally can. So Jordan, Jordan runs the, Mr. Hein runs the Franklin High School Facebook, and so he'll post some great things on the high school page. I'll see that and I'll reshare it, or if he tags the district, then it comes to the district as well. But it's not an automatic thing. We have to be strategic and conscious about what we choose to share. Any other questions?
Also, staff recognition, I think that was something that I saw on the middle school, you know, staff wants to be recognized. Has that kind of changed or fallen off, or there used to be, you could nominate, is that coming back? I know we've been focused on other things, but.
Yeah, I would say we've been having conversations through HR about how to best recognize staff and putting something together. I don't know if we have anything to share right now.
Sure.
Go for it.
Based upon the engagement data from the first year, right now, the focus is at the site level. So at the department or the building level, where if you look at the research, it has the greatest impact, as opposed to starting at our level. Certainly, with everything going on, there is holds on some of the ways in which we used to do recognition. Just take the employee recognition dinner as an example of that. That we will use partially the Intranet to start as a pushout, to start to celebrate career milestones, personal celebrations like weddings or birthdays, babies of staff. So it has so many facets when you look at recognition, and making sure that program has touched the many facets is important. But really, building the foundation at the supervisor or building level is really where we're focused this year.
And I have to say, the website, I know, it's great that you've added those streams. If you could, I don't think you've changed the pictures since the beginning of the school year, and it just kind of, it's just me, probably, because I pull it up, big picture.
Sure.
I immediately think, well, nothing new here.
Sure.
If you could just, or just take them off, I don't know.
Well, so that is purposeful.
Because it just, right away, it's like, nothing's changed, so.
Right. So that is purposeful, that we don't, usually we change the pictures mid-year. So as we get here into December, I will refresh them into some new pictures. But with the website, with it being more of a static place for people to access, we tend to not change those banner pictures very often, because we want them to relate to better place to learn, better place to work, better community, and that's what the little tags are in the picture. So we do tend to keep those for about half the year. Social media is where we do constantly put new pictures, and that's just what people are used to and expecting, so that's been our focus.
Must be just through my brain works, though, because I go to a website and same picture.
Sure, sure.
I have to scroll down before I can see this.
Yeah, we'll be refreshing them here probably December into January.
Okay. Just don't put them up there.
Yeah, well, there has to be something there.
Then you have the engaging stuff right there.
Sure.
I'm just sharing, sorry.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I think we're old-fashioned, though. I don't know.
Nobody else is looking at the website, probably. I mean, Alan didn't even think about looking there for information, so.
I'll just say, I hear from people out in the community, someone actually just last week at work said to me, you know, I don't have kids in the district, but I have gone to your, just to kind of keep up with what's happening, gone to the website. So I would just like to say, I mean, I think the website, but also Facebook pages, things like that, you're doing a great job with communication. And as a parent who has received phone calls and emails and lots of things from you this year so far with COVID stuff, it is a very streamlined process, and it really is helpful when you are that parent, getting, you know, kind of, you know, somewhat upsetting.
Totally.
Phone call, you know, to get that nice voice of Mr. Kafka on the phone, like, okay, everything's going to be okay. Drop everything and go get your kid, bud, it's okay. No, but you're juggling about 18 things, and I'm really impressed, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much, thank you. Thank you guys for your time very much. I will send you the slides if you want to dive deeper into that, or if you have any questions, please reach out.
And Chad, we have another update at the end of the school year, correct?
Our next item would be the annual assessment report from Dr. Kohn.
Good evening, everybody. The full 23-page report is on Board Docs, and I'll highlight pieces of it tonight, and we'll talk through it. Believe it or not, it's a little bit lighter than it's been in years past, because of the connection between COVID and this past spring, and some of the impact that that's had on the state assessment. So I'll highlight some pieces, and then certainly we can have some dialogue around questions or things that you want to know more about. I guess I would start by talking about the overall landscape of state assessment, kind of where we've been in the last couple of months and where we're heading. As you know, and as was referenced in the report last spring, all standardized assessment, with the exception of the ACT, which was a bit pre-pandemic, was canceled by the state of Wisconsin, with the support of the federal government in terms of oversight and accountability. That included the state report card for last year that would be typically issued this fall. All of that was postponed and canceled. As we look into this school year, we anticipate that all of that standardized testing will return. The caveat I would place on that is, we have seen some decisions recently that suggest that maybe that won't be the case. One of those is the access assessment, which is the assessment we give to our EL students. Usually, that window opens in December, and we were prepared to administer that assessment, and then about three to four weeks ago, the state came in and postponed that assessment until the spring. That was a kind of interesting signal to us as to why was that occurring? Either they were postponing to provide more time, or there might be anticipation that at some point, state assessment might get canceled, and so they've pushed it into that window. Why that's curious for us is, the window that that assessment moved into now overlaps with a number of other spring assessments, including the forward exam. And so typically, you'd want to try to avoid that sort of overlap, and the state has pushed it there, which has been interesting. The other is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or the NAEP assessment, which is given every two years, and measures a variety of areas based on certain demographics across the country. It's the one really federally mandated national assessment, was just a couple of weeks ago canceled for this academic year. And so, you know, again, we anticipate, as of right now, all systems go in terms of those state assessments, and my office is working regularly to prepare for those. But, you know, again, those things start to signal to us potential shifts, and so we're going to keep an eye on that. The other thing that we're anticipating this year is an issuance of a state report card for this school year next fall, and all signs point to that occurring, though, as has been the case in multiple years past, it will look different again. One of the key changes to the state report card when it is reissued here moving forward is to the gap closure, closing gaps portion of that state report card. If you recall, there are kind of multiple sections of that state report card, from achievement and growth, to some other things that we're monitoring, such as absenteeism. The closing gaps metric used a formula that took our demographic populations, broken down by race, socioeconomic status, EL status, and then compared how our students in that demographic group were doing to their non-demographic peers across the state, or alternate demographic groups. So for example, they would look at our low socioeconomic status students, how they performed in the state assessment, and then compare them to their non-low socioeconomic status peers across the state. The idea being that they want to see how well we're closing that gap between the demographic group and the other demographic group statewide. All of that's going away with the next round of state report card. The next state report card instead is taking each school and district's 25% of their lowest performing students on the assessment, and then essentially running a mini-state report card on just that 25%, and then that's the score for that area, regardless of demographic group. So it, that's a fairly significant change. And again, though it uses multiple years of data, it becomes really difficult for us to compare our performance from year to year when the metrics continue to shift year over year on that state report card. And so we don't know what the impact of that will be yet. The state has indicated that this spring, they will be issuing a mock state report card for internal use from this past year for the assessment we did have, like the ACT, just to show us what that might look like. And so we'll be interested to see how that works. There are, again, some kind of messages below the surface here, that perhaps we won't have a state report card for this school year again. But as of right now, we're anticipating and hoping that will occur.
Just a quick question. So they seem to be leaning toward not having it. What would be their reasons for not doing it? Afraid of the results, or not, we can't trust the results?
No, I think it's a matter of not having assessment data, right? So if there's a move to cancel any sort of state assessments, we don't have any data to filter into the state report card.
Right, but why would they cancel those assessments?
I think it's, right now, there potentially is concern about just the logistics of making that happen. There are a number of school districts throughout the state that are fully virtual, or have kind of a staggered in-person, and so just the logistics of how do we administer those assessments becomes difficult. Unlike our internal assessments, like the map assessment that we can administer virtually, things like the ACT, the forward exam, the access test, we can't administer those assessments virtually. So that would be the concern, right? That an MPS, for example, would have to organize a way to administer those assessments to all the students who are not attending school. So those are, I think, some of the things that the state's grappling with.
So is it a technology issue, or is it?
I think it's a student-servant-school issue in some places, and there's a concern about how to do that safely, in a way that makes sense.
And the design of the assessment is not conducive for kids to do on the computers. It's, and that's what you're saying.
Well, there's a number of assessments that can be done on computer, like the ACT Aspire Forward, ACT are all computer-based, they're just not virtual, like, I can't send that home.
Yeah.
Right? So I can do the assessment on a computer, but I have to be in a school building in order to do that. So that's the concern, right? But again, the state, the state is telling us, plan for it, and then I'll keep you posted as we kind of move throughout the spring. As I highlight just a couple other pieces of the report, I guess I just wanted to kind of focus in on, you're going to notice that this report is all about our standardized assessments, right? But our daily instruction and the formative and summative assessment that's occurring in the classroom really is driving our educational decisions on a daily basis. So even though we don't have certain standardized assessment data from this past spring, we're still full speed ahead, right, in terms of how we're instructing students and the decisions we're making daily around where they're learning, and where their gaps are, and how we're going to support around that. And so again, I'll emphasize a lot of standardized pieces in here, but just keep in mind that this is only one part of our overall assessment package and how we approach working with students. In terms of highlighting a couple pieces of the report, I wanted to start on page seven with the College and Career Readiness Scorecard. This is something that you may recall, starting a couple of years ago now. It ties to a kind of nationwide network called the Redefining Ready Framework, that seeks to expand our approach to student success beyond just a single standardized test score. And so every year now, through our Qualtrics platform, we publish a College and Career Readiness Scorecard that measures kind of all of these different metrics that you're seeing here, as a way of determining the extent to which students graduate college and career-ready. So again, to remind you, the data that you're seeing on here is for the graduating class in that year. And so it's not all students in that year, it's just the graduating class. What we've seen is, you know, as we've done intentional work, especially on the career readiness side, you'll see some of those numbers have increased dramatically over the three years, in terms of things like industry certification, work-based learning experience, post-secondary credit. These are pieces that we've really intentionally built over the years, and have done a great job of kind of building a foundation for, in terms of providing those experiences for our students. And then on the other side, we continue to monitor things like student performance in math, AP participation, ACT readiness, those kinds of things. And then again, that helps us. Within Power School, our student information system, each high school student has embedded within that a College and Career Readiness Profile Report that's personal to them, that reflects these same metrics. And so our administrative team, our teaching staff, and if they want, parents and students have access to that information, so they can see how their child's doing around these metrics that move beyond just a singular test score. And so that's something that will remain important and will continue to provide information around. In terms of the two assessments that we really do have information on from last school year, pages 11 through 17 start to get into the ACT and the Advanced Placement Exam assessments. What's interesting, there's a couple of things that are interesting. One, the ACT, you're going to notice that we've bounced back from kind of a one-year dip. Just a reminder that these are juniors who are taking these assessments, and it's just their performance on the one instance of that assessment. I was talking to Mr. Volo just last week about the fact that so many of our students take the ACT multiple times, that this one snapshot, you know, sometimes is not the best indicator of how we're doing overall. I'll give you an example. He pointed to a student who, on this assessment, as a junior, a couple of years ago, scored a 23 overall composite score, studied up, worked, retook the assessment as a senior, and got a 34. So, significant difference, right? And that's probably an outlier of an example, but it suggests, right, that student performance on standardized assessments is fluid, and, you know, is something that students can continue to prepare for and kind of attain at greater levels as they move through. You'll see, again, you know, that our performance has ticked up, certainly room to grow, right? We can continue to perform well, and as Dr. Reuter talks about, all of the programming changes and support that we're providing in areas like math and science over the last couple of years, right, that's designed to improve outcomes for students, and we should start seeing the results of that and have within the last year here in terms of our standardized results. Within that, I also point to, and I'll spend a little time at the end, pointing to the significant gaps that still exist between some of our demographic groups and their non-demographic peers, right? As we talk about, again, socioeconomic status, as we talk about EL status, as we talk about special education status, right? We're seeing gaps, again, not unlike many other schools in the state of Wisconsin and across the country, but again, it emphasizes the importance of our ongoing equity work, and these will be metrics that take on particular importance to us as we track our progress over time around how well the work we're doing around equity is impacting student performance, especially in closing these gaps across the system. And so we'll continue to pay attention and transparently share that data so that we can be honest about where we are and where the growth areas are for us, and then how we're doing as we seek to close those gaps over time. Same is true of our advanced placement scores. Now, what's interesting about AP, the College Board is often seen as a fairly traditional, much like ACT, right, a fairly traditional testing system, right? And there's not a lot of change there, right, over the years. What was interesting this past spring is even the College Board in AP had to evolve. And so advanced placement exams were provided to students at home during the shutdown this past spring, and there was a number of security protocols put in place to make sure that students were maintaining the validity and reliability of the assessment, but with that, they did find a way. And so you're going to notice that, for the first time in a few years here, our overall three or better pass rate on the AP went up from a 77% to an 82%. And, you know, how much of that you can attribute to that comparison year over year, I don't know. I can tell you that the difficulty of the exams was about on par with where it had been previous years, based on nationwide pass rates, but our students did pretty well in terms of their overall performance. That data is further shown, right, in our AP Scholars Data, which also is indicating increases. It's also interesting that our metrics held fairly steady in terms of the volume of students who took AP exams last year, especially given kind of the unique circumstances. Students still moved forward around that and took those exams at a fairly high rate, which of course, if we're passing those exams, means students are earning college credit for free that's transferring into the university of their choice. And so, that kind of only helps, right, over time. On pages 18 and 19, you heard Mr. Sprague ask Ms. King a little bit about the MAP assessment. Typically, in the assessment report, I don't include our internal metrics, right? I'm including a lot of kind of external standardized data for you, because the internal metrics like math, the ACT Aspire Interom, are really over-time assessments. It's kind of difficult to look at a singular administration of that assessment and get a sense of what it means, and that's because those assessments are focused on growth over time, right? The MAP assessment really is best served when it's administered multiple times a year so that you can see how students are performing over time, and it's one of the tools we use internally to measure our impact on student achievement in reading and math, and how well students are performing. I share it with you this year in terms of fall because of the lack of spring standardized data, and to, again, be transparent with you about what the potential impact of that shutdown last spring was on student performance. You heard Ms. King talk about projected learning loss, right? I want to explain that a little bit. On the MAP assessment, if you take it in fall and then take it again in spring, each child is given a projected growth score, an amount of points that they should grow over time based on a typical peer at their starting point across the country, right? It's a normed assessment. So they look at how that stacks over time. What NWA projects is, in a typical summer, we see some loss of the gains that were made the prior year. So if you think about a child gaining in their learning from fall to spring, they grow by a certain amount, right? And then over summer, there's a slip back over those three months a little bit? Well, that was exacerbated by that extended three-month time moving back to March. And so what NWA projected, or predicted, the MAP Assessment Company, was that 30% of the reading gains that children had made from September until March would be lost over the summer and show up in fall. 50% of the math gains from September to March would be lost over that extended period and then show up this fall. What we saw in the assessment was that show up in the growth score. We measured student performance a year ago fall to this fall and looked at their growth, and what we saw is a bit of a dip in reading, which starts to align with that percentage, and then a bigger dip in math, right, which again aligns with what NWA was projecting. And so that slide back in those two areas, K8 for us, is something that we're taking a look at. We obviously have a second administration now coming up in January, and so it's going to be really important for us now to monitor, did we gain some of that back, and what does that look like? And so we'll be utilizing that assessment to kind of gauge how this fall has gone and how our students are performing in those areas. All of that is recoverable, and NWA has been very clear about, it is able to be recovered, right, with high-quality instruction in the classroom. And so we're confident in our level of instruction that we've been able to provide this fall, and we're confident that we'll see those gain backs as we move into January, but it's something that we're keeping an eye on. Interestingly, that loss was lessened each year up till high school, right? So as you start to look at the ACT Aspire Interom and look at that same comparison from fall to fall, this is ninth and 10th grade, there was virtually no change. In fact, we had a gain in some respects, right, with our ninth and 10th graders. And that's just because the expected growth of students at those levels is just not as high as, say, a second grader who's engaging in reading instruction. And so that impact is lessened as you move up across the grade levels, and that's what we saw in that work. So we'll continue to administer those assessments, we'll continue to utilize that information, our teachers will utilize it, we'll utilize it, and it's something we'll continue to On pages 20 and 21, you're going to see a reference back to student engagement, something that's a core part of the coherence plan and something that we monitor regularly. Under Ms. Cody's leadership, we've shifted the way we administer that assessment a little bit this year. Typically, we give it three times a year. We would give that student engagement assessment in the fall, typically late September, early October. We would give it again in January, February, and then we'd try to give it again in May, and look at that kind of growth over time. This year, we've been administering it monthly, and part of the reason for that is we need data a little bit faster so that we can see our impact now here in a shorter-term span. Our teams are working, our improvement teams are working in terms of 30-day cycles this year. They have monthly action plans that they continue to build towards, and so that data is helping them at a little bit faster pace kind of gauge where we're at. What you are going to see is the comparison from the last three assessments, or the last three times we've given that, stretching back to last year. And what you're going to see in there are some gains, again, across the board in terms of our engagement. And so we're confident that some of our internal work that we've done here over the last couple of years of the coherence plan is having a positive impact on where we're heading with student engagement, especially the work we've done around social-emotional learning and some of the work we've done around education for employment and those community-based learning experiences, and we know that that's having a positive impact on our students. Now, as we administer, again, in November, December, January, February, as we start to administer a little more frequently, right, we'll have that pulse, and we'll kind of see if we're continuing to trend in that positive direction. What's interesting about the engagement survey is we're able to give it all the way down to kindergarten, and even in those classrooms, the teachers are able to have a conversation with students. The statements are reflected in smiley faces or frowny faces, and the child picks that, right, based on their reaction to the particular statement. It also allows us to use the same statements across the entire age band, so we're not having to change or modify those and then interpret the differences. So engagement, you know, as we re-up the coherence plan in the next three years, is going to continue to be an important measure for us and something that we'll watch and monitor. The last thing that I want to highlight, and then we can maybe get into some questions or things that you're interested in, is the equity data on pages 22, 23. There's equity data throughout, right, but this one in particular highlights intervention, highlights disciplinary referrals, highlights some other pieces that are really important to us in terms of just measuring, again, that disproportionality, right? And again, to remind you how to read that, the one bar shows the percent of our student body that that particular demographic group makes up, right? So let's say that it's 16% of our student body. We would expect that if a particular group makes up 16% of our student body, that if it was proportionate, they would also make up 16% of our disciplinary referrals, or they would make up 16% of our gifted referrals, right? Those numbers would be proportionate. So when you see, you know, for example, the low socioeconomic status students up at 35% right in a particular area, that's suggesting that it's disproportionate to the number of students that are in that demographic group in the schools, and is an area of concern and one that we need to, you know, kind of root cause, talk more about and dive into. What I would suggest to you as you look at that data is, this is really only our second year of tracking that data formally. Within our Qualtrics platform, we have an entire equity dashboard that gets into literally hundreds of metrics related to equity and these sorts of things that I'm demonstrating here or showing you, and those are things that we're going to continue to monitor and watch. And again, as we do our equity work here over the next several years, we will select areas of these metrics that we want to continue to intently monitor and hope that we're having a positive impact on, to make sure that we're gaining and growing the overall health of the organization. And so, you know, again, we're going to share them transparently, we're going to monitor them, it's something that's important to us and something that we're going to continue to work towards. So that's kind of the high-level overview of the assessment report. Obviously, there's a lot of information in the report. I'd be happy to address any questions you have at this point.
Nick, when I looked at page six, I see that we're significantly exceeding or exceeding expectations. When I go back into past years when we ranked our school Franklin, I think it's in the ACT compared to all of the districts, we're in the top 5 to 10% usually.
Yes.
And then I go to page eight, where there's a graph that shows graduates, is it eight or nine? Nine, sorry. Graduates of Franklin High School completing post-secondary degree within six years, and our trend line is below the national average. And that doesn't compute well with me, and I thought about it, and are we teaching our kids to pass tests and not truly getting them prepared for the next phase, which is college, so that they don't jump from one major to another? I mean, that can be something that'll extend college beyond six years. Or they're not motivated enough that they know how to study on their own, and, but the things that we see when they come in here like today, what Aaron brought, how we're really teaching them how to challenge themselves, et cetera, I would say that, that doesn't seem to make sense, so I don't really understand why the...
Yeah, it's a good question. So let me characterize this for you a little bit. So just to keep in mind that this is students who have started a post-secondary program, and then the percent of those students that have completed it within six years, so...
And we do see that 80% of our kids go on to college.
Yep, so this is students who have enrolled, right, and then the percent of those students that complete. And there's so many reasons, right, why students don't complete their degree programs. You know, certainly it's a metric that universities are monitoring themselves internally, right? They want to monitor their own retention rates. The other thing I would point to is just, you know, we've been fairly close to that national average. We've been within maybe a couple of percent within a given year. Certainly, we can push it higher or seek to. It's one of those metrics that we watch over time and that we monitor, and it's important to us to kind of keep at the forefront, but I would just point to, there are a lot of factors there, right? I mean, there's our role in preparing students to be successful, right? And that's measured by a variety of other metrics, right? Everything on that College and Career Readiness Scorecard, and then there's the university's responsibility for helping students kind of move through. I would argue that part of this issue relates to career exposure, and students being exposed to enough things at an early enough age to start to make some decisions about where they want to go, rather than do that exploration in college, right? One of the things that have been a push for us is, if we can have students have authentic internship opportunities, if they can have a community mentor, if they can be involved in a pathway and figure out they don't want to do that while they're in high school, that the opportunity for those students to be more successful in college increases because they've ruled out things they don't want to do. Instead of going to college, spending time in a major for two years, decide they want to flip to another major for two more years, and then flip again, and suddenly we're six, seven years out without a degree, and we have a bunch of debt, right, from all those years. So those are the kinds of ways that we're trying to attack that. Try to attack it from a, certainly an academic sense, right, in terms of, are they prepared for the level of math they need for college? Are they prepared for the level of reading they need for college? But we also try to attack it from that community-based side and try to provide those authentic opportunities. So as we get to more recent graduating classes, you notice this goes up to the graduating class of 2014. As we start to get to 2017, 2018, 2019, where that programming has really taken hold, we're hoping that we'll see the positive impact of some of that. The last thing I would say about that is, my hope is that every student who wants to go to college has the opportunity. It's not to say every student has to go to college, but we want every child to have the opportunity to go to college if they want. And so that's the focus of our work, to prepare students for that outcome.
I know that's a national line. What is the state of Wisconsin? How do we compare to the national?
Yeah, it's right around it. We are almost at, if not slightly above or slightly below, depending on the year. So all of those trend lines are very tightly packed together.
So the state of Wisconsin is above the national average, or...
It kind of goes up and down, right? In a given year, it's a percent below, and another year, it's a percent or two above, another year, it's a percent below again, so it kind of wavers around that. We're very much an average state in terms of that overall trend.
Interesting.
Do we have any idea what the numbers are going to be like for 2017, say? I mean, this is, talk about a lagging indicator. I mean, it couldn't, it can't lag much more than this. How do we, we've gone up, basically. How do we know that we're doing the right things for this sort of, for the post-secondary degree in the interim?
Yeah, we have to rely on our high school indicators, because it is a six-year indicator. There's no real other way to do that. Most degree programs take between four and a half and five and a half years. So, you know, you have to kind of wait that out, right, to get that data, plus the source of the information, we just don't get it. National Clearinghouse doesn't provide us two-year data. So what we have to rely on is all the internal metrics that we watch to make sure that our programming is having a positive impact, right? Are we seeing gains in math? Are we seeing overall attendance rates increase? Are we seeing engagement go up, right? Those are the things that are telling us our programming's working. The hope is then that that will be validated on the backend, right, by some of this other data.
I mean, I guess when I look at the ACT, percent of students proficient in those different subject areas, you know, only 50% are proficient, so it shouldn't surprise us that, and that's what ACT is supposed to do, predict success in college, and clearly our scores predict that half of our kids aren't ready for college.
Yeah.
So what if they, or maybe they should be doing something else? I don't know. Is it a match of...
Yeah.
I didn't want to ask that question, but, you know...
So, you know, this is where I start to throw up a word of caution, right, around the nature of standardized assessment. ACT is important. I'm not going to say it isn't. This data reflects a point in time, their junior year, right? With a whole other year of instruction yet at the high school level to go. Also, remember that this is ACT saying that you have an increased chance, so if we're looking at math, you have an increased chance of passing college algebra if you hit that readiness number or above, right? In other words, when students hit that readiness number, typically, they do well in college algebra when they're in college. That's not to say the students that don't hit that number don't do well. It just means that the students who hit that number tend to do well, right? So there's a lot of variables that kind of impact that piece, but you're not wrong in that certainly we want that to be higher, right? We want as many students as possible to hit that readiness benchmark. That's what we're striving for. So, work to do, for sure, but I also wouldn't over-rely on that as the indicator of college success, because there are a lot of students that don't hit that benchmark that do just fine in college.
I just have one quick question on the page 22. I guess it comes out there. But you have the black line, which is the percent of overall Franklin Public School students, and this gets repeated. So 17.1% of our students are considered low socioeconomic status. It just seems like a high number to me, but it is seven, am I reading that correctly?
For this sample, that's correct, yep. The students that were included in this data set. Yes, is the answer to your question.
Which is all our students, right?
And that's one reason we have three Title I schools. That represents that population.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we know how we're doing, or how our students are doing on, in terms of growth this year versus schools that are, schools that are completely virtual, schools that are on half-virtual and half-not? Obviously, we don't know that information now, but will we be doing something to get that information so that we can figure out going forward, what's the best way to teach so that we can figure out going forward, what's the best way to teach our kids? I mean, obviously, virtual is the best way, but did our virtual programs work? Did our, you know, what is the MAP data testing showing us? What does any assessment data showing us in terms of? We think we have a good plan, but do we have a good plan?
Yeah, there's kind of two parts to that question. In terms of the comparative, without state assessment, there's really no comparative point, right? And most districts that are fully virtual aren't standardized assessing internally. So there's just not a lot of comparison point. If we have standardized assessment, then yeah, we'll be able to kind of say, how did we do compared to others? In terms of how do we know how we're doing? Well, again, every day, we're kind of taking the assessment pulse of our students internally, right? And we're looking at that data and that information and determining where students are. We'll have another round of standardized data internally here in January. I think that'll be big for us in terms of seeing how the impact of the fall sought to close those gaps for students and how we're performing. And then if we have a round of external standardized assessments this spring, that'll certainly tell us how we're doing as well in terms of those bigger pieces. It'll be, it's going to be an interesting couple of years in terms of comparisons. You know, you almost can't compare now any trends to prior year. You almost have to look at this as kind of a new starting point for moving forward. And I know other districts will be kind of looking at their own programming that same way. So, you know, we're anxious to continue to gather as many data sources as we can. But you've heard Dr. Reuter talk about, you know, everything from kind of the external surveying we're doing around the virtual program to our internal analysis of how students are performing in our schools every day, right? That's telling us things every day about how our kids are doing. And we're very confident in the program we've been able to provide, both virtually and in person this year, and stand behind that. So we're hoping that'll bear out in some of the standardized assessment that we use move forward, but we're confident we're in a good place.
I'm just glad we're looking at that data to figure out, after this is all over, how did we do and how can we make our programming better because of it?
Yeah, that's the point of coherence plan, right?
And I'm glad we're doing it.
Continuous improvement, right? We've got to get better every day, so.
Just one quick question on the, sorry, student engagement. You mentioned that it's the same sort of questions across all the ages, right?
Yep.
Are you worried about, like, survey fatigue? If I'm being asked the same three times a year since I'm a kid?
It's so interesting. If you had asked me that two years ago, I would have said absolutely, right? But for whatever reason, two things have happened. One, Qualtrics has really revolutionized, and you've heard me talk about this before, our overall response rates. We have not seen survey fatigue, even with our community surveying. We're asking, like, for example, Dr. Reuter was just talking about, we survey our parents around the virtual program. We had the same number of respondents in month two that we had in month one, right? So we're seeing continued high response rates. Our students have gotten used to kind of the volume of surveying that we've been engaging in around, especially the student engagement survey. Students want to have a voice, right? And so we found that students are anxious, if not eager, to provide the information to us. This is supplemented in many schools by focus groups, right? So that we're having dialogue with students alongside the survey data to kind of dig deeper and get a sense of the student experience on a daily basis. So I don't have a lot of concerns at this point about survey fatigue. Certainly, if we were surveying weekly or something that was a little bit outrageous like that, we probably see lower response rates. But our response rates continue to be very high across the board in all of our surveys, be it community or student.
Do students have a choice on whether they take this or not?
You know, not, I mean, everybody has a choice. You know, when your second-grade teacher is saying, all right, it's time for us all to take this assessment, right? The students are typically going to do that, even up to the high school level. But yeah, I mean, a student is not, we cannot force a student to take the survey.
It reminds me of all the surveys I, as a consumer, everywhere you go, everyone wants to know how we're doing. And you walk past the smiley face thing, I don't even, something that I just, I don't even want to hit that thing.
Yeah.
I think we're, okay, but feedback's important.
And we've enhanced our student engagement survey this year where if a student says disagree or strongly disagree, it prompts them to provide written feedback as to why at our upper-grade levels. So in the past, it would just be the rating. Now, the rating triggers, tell us more about that, so that we can get at some of those real causes.
I'd like to thank Dr. Cohen for his work on this report. And, you know, when you think where we were at just five years ago in terms of our data collection and our analysis of it, we've made great, great strides. And he loves this. And I think if the happiest Christmas present under his tree would be a new widget for Qualtrics.
Love Qualtrics. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding, Dr. Miller.
There really isn't a large need for discussion around this. I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I don't think it's a document that the board has seen in a very long time. We've been in a relationship with the Franklin Police Department for a number of years. This particular MOU was drafted initially in 2014. And every year, it's a document that serves as an agreement between the school district and the police department. So in talking to Chief Oliva, we both thought it was time to bring that forward to both the school board and the common council to remind each of that relationship and how we're working together. So I really just wanted you to see it and know that I'll be signing this again on behalf of the district. And we do value that relationship.
I have a question on it.
Sure.
In the area of dismissal of SRO, it does say the superintendent may request to the chief of police the removal of a SRO. Shouldn't that word not be removal, but replacement? Because the board had to approve having the police officer come into the schools. I don't, wouldn't think then that the superintendent could have a police officer removed from that, but replaced, yes, if they're not doing their job.
Okay, I will make note of that and have that conversation with the chief. And I know that legal counsel for the city as well takes a look at these documents, but I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Dr. Miller. Next is our board discussion for the process of budget review and budget information.
Would you like me to lead that discussion or is that okay to everybody?
Please.
Okay. It's not new that you, I have brought some focus on the budget documents that currently exist. And I think there's some, we could consider some changes to improve those for transparency and understanding of how the numbers are put together. And to kind of facilitate that, I've gathered a number of documents from different districts. And I've shared those with the board. And I guess, I think, you probably need to hear from other board members, so it's not just me making that request. And if, Judy, I'll ask you, if you want me to make a motion, form a motion to make some changes, I can do that. But otherwise, if you just, you need to hear from other board members. If we can go in that direction, you know, what would it take to, well, I want us to move in that direction. And it's either you hearing from board members or me making a motion and having a vote. What would you need to...
So I think in order for us to have clarity around what the document should look like, the full board should recommend what changes should occur within the document. So I think lead the discussion, we'll see where it goes and determine if a motion is necessary or not.
I certainly don't think we can, at this point, bring to you a finished, completed document with markups and all that. And I'm not even interested in working with the current document. I think, but the overall direction would be to increase the transparency and understanding how those expenditures numbers are put together. And clearly, there are examples that board members have seen that do that. I think in a better way than we currently have. And so it could be a matter of maybe a small committee that could get together and look through those documents and provide a template. And maybe in conjunction with Mr. Milzer, put together something that could be brought to the board in March. And then we can vote at that point. That would be one way we could approach this, but we certainly can't...
I think that sounds like a great idea, actually, because then we get, we can get Jim's input on it too rather than us just saying, this is what we want. I mean, I think it's important to include Jim. And I think it's important to go over some of those documents that you provided with more of a fine-tooth comb, per se, to take the best out of each document. There's one I liked the best out of all of them, but there were qualities in a couple of them that were good. But I'd want to compare those two, currently what's being provided to us, and then get the best of both worlds, per se. But there was, the one document that was provided in your examples provided additional detail in, it's what, I mean, it was very clear where at times, I think we could use a little bit more of that detail. Again, for the transparency, I mean, because this is taxpayer money we're spending and we want to be able to show it in the most concise and detailed way for everybody's understanding, not just some people's understanding.
Do you remember which document that was that you liked the most?
I really liked the Waukesha, the detail of the Waukesha document where it showed the past three years, showed the percentage. I thought it was just a lot of information, but it's information that we probably have. I mean, because it's all state-required information. And it was easy to look at. And when we sometimes just get summary information, we don't know what we don't know. So the more detail, the better. And if I want to look at that detail and maybe question the detail, fine. If I don't, that's okay too, but I'd rather supply more information. But it was the pages 40 through 58, actually, is the detailed portion of it, is what I really liked.
Mrs. Wacowski, did you have a favorite document?
Well, I did provide a narrative, and it is a combination of documents that I would pull together. Not any one document, I think, has the perfect, and we, again, we would probably make it Franklin's own also because, again, we have probably a different revenue picture than some of the other districts that I've looked at.
I like the, I like the frequently, I would call it a frequently asked questions section that most of them contain things like understanding, understanding the tax levy, understanding what Act 10 is or was, understanding, telling a story about where the budget has been and where the budget is going, having some sort of plan for the future. You know, we have a, I know we have a plan for the future. We don't necessarily put our budget plan in writing for the future. And, you know, we've come up with a three-year plan for the district, and that's going to roll over. Well, I think that should include the, I think that the budget is one of, is probably the most important thing we look at over the year as a board. And I think for transparency, I'm very surprised, I was very surprised when I joined the board that there wasn't a budget committee. And I don't know exactly why there wasn't, why there isn't one anymore, but I think there should be one.
Well, what we're talking about here really isn't a budget committee. It's just a committee to talk about the budget document. Budget committee would probably be a different discussion.
Okay.
It could be, yes. I don't want to oversell this, but I know that we just adopted a budget with zero levy, and that is great and, or a great financial position. And this is exactly the time that would be good to take a look and refresh what we're doing because we know that there are stresses ahead of us. I mean, clearly, there's going to be some things happening. And this is the best time for us to take a look and how can we communicate information in a understandable way and engage our citizens a little bit and look to the future. So this is just a great time to do this.
And by no means do I want this to sound like we think this is, I think this is a bad, we're doing a bad job on this. I don't think we are. I just think we can do better. And like Linda said, I think now is the time when we should be proud. We have zero increase in tax levy in a very difficult year. So maybe now is the time to refresh.
And I think just making that clear to the, you know, the average community member who doesn't spend a lot of time, who doesn't sit down with Jim and, you know, really look at things. If you're a community member, find, having that easy access to, you know, easy information. Why is this good? How does this impact me as a community member? Maybe some, you know, maybe it's easier for someone to read that in more of a narrative form than just looking at stacks of numbers. It might generate some, I don't know, goodwill or good PR in the community to have somebody say, hey, did you see that in the budget? It was a real easy paragraph to read and it made me understand what the zero levy means or whatever it is.
All right, what's our next step?
Yes, to you.
The treasurer, I was a little curious about the treasurer's opinion in this regard.
I agree with a lot of what was said. I don't think we're doing, we're not doing a bad job in handling the finances of the district.
That's not, that's not the issue.
No, no, I think Jim's doing a great job. I think the presentation, it bothered me day one when I saw that we have items under $300 and over $300 on our budget when we get some detail. That's, to me, that's literally no detail at all. And so I do like a lot of things that were laid out here. So what Claude mentioned, the Waukesha budget, yes, got a lot of good detail. Menominee Falls in pages 24 through about 30, they had nice detail in there. I like that. But we should expand. And what we expand to, I don't know what Jim has available to him. And I, you know, are we going to have to buy new software or something? That might be crazy to go that route. But what do we have? What can we do with it? And yeah, we need that committee to have that discussion.
Well, I think a really good next step would be for you as the treasurer to meet with Mr. Milzer and have a discussion about what you see as the treasurer should be included in this budget document. I think that would be a good next step.
I actually was going to be giving Mr. Milzer a call.
Yeah. And Mr. Milzer, I'm not sure what you would think about that.
Yeah, I think that's one of the purposes of the liaison, to do that. And I think everybody has said something. I've taken notes. So I think if we talked about it and went through it, we could come up with something that would do what we're looking for.
And then you would bring that back to the full board to respond to, correct?
Right, right. I would need the documents, though. I didn't receive any.
I emailed them to you this afternoon, Jim.
I think we'd receive them at 5:00 today.
Yeah, after 5:00, you sent me one of the documents and your report. But people are mentioning other documents I don't have. If you could send those to me, that'd be a good start.
Can we have a timeline, though? And I'm not sure if, you know, why not a broader perspective, I guess? Why are you suggesting?
Well, I think at this point, what we need to do is let them get the documents that we're looking at. We've mentioned Menominee Falls, we've mentioned Waukesha. I personally, when I've looked through business plans and seen the level of detail and just putting together just business numbers, and you have to have that supporting detail, having the expansion, the added clarity, that both of these two examples is what I'll call them, that level of detail adds a certain amount of clarity that when you're looking at a budget, you can see at a glance, this is the gross numbers. This is the big piece of the pie. But you can also see that level of detail. It shows you what all those pieces parts, that is ingredients that went into that segment of the pie. And I think that eliminates some of the questions that we as a board bring up because we get the budget in advance, we get the chance to read through it, but then we have to wait or, you know, via email and pose questions and wait for answers to come back. Where with that extra clarity, it'll actually clean it up for us. And then from the community standpoint, it's almost like we're showing our full hand as to what's going on in the district. And so I'm more of the opinion that, you know, we give the administration the chance with Allen... And so I'm more of the opinion that, you know, we give the administration the chance with Alan working with them to go through this. I would think all of this documented, or all of this data exists because Jim already uses it to compile what we get to see every year. So the, the formatting of it is what we're talking about.
The information's got to be there.
Yeah, he can't, he can't present the document to us without all this backup data in the system.
And to your question, Ms. Wackowski, we need to, to backtrack from, you know, that first budget draft in June. We've got to make sure that the board can see, see these, these proposed changes on at least two occasions prior to that first draft coming out. So we would build a timeline so that the board would have at least two occasions to look at whatever is being drafted and provide additional input into that document.
You're not talking about the current drafts that we receive, you're talking about drafts of revised redrafts that comes to the board more than once.
Right, right. Before the, before the.
We settle on a.
Right, right. So that's how we would proceed. And I, I don't know if that would be, that first draft would come in January or February, depending on what Mr. Milzer and Mr. Alex Sandrovich put together with looking at all of the documents. Alan, Mr. Alex Sandrovich perhaps could reach out to individual board members if he has questions about what he heard tonight and what their preferences are, and then together they can work through that, and we can bring it on a couple of occasions so that you can all see those changes and be a part of providing input on what that final document would then look like in June. So I think that that, it would be a really prudent way to proceed with, with making the changes that represent what the board would like to put out there publicly and have for their own use.
Does that sound like a plan you guys could support, consensus?
Well, you know, I can agree with that, but my, I think the, what we missed, though, is a broader perspective, though, you know. You know, did Alan volunteer? You know, do you want to do this? You know.
Treasurer.
Well, yes, he's the treasurer.
Those are the territory.
It would be, and I guess we've made incremental changes in the past that we're just kind of added. And I just really want this to be a refresh and not just a tweak. So I am willing to see when he comes back with it, but.
The other thing I, I plan to do would be to have Mr. Kafka involved because of his ability to, to create a graphic representation so well that I think you will end up seeing a fairly different document. But, you know, it is important that it captures the pieces that are important to you. So that's why I would come back a couple of times, so you could take a look at it and determine what else you feel is necessary be placed in the document.
So you'll be the point person. We could interact with Alan, we'll interact with Jim.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll make sure it gets on our agendas.
Okay. I think that would be a good approach.
Yeah, if you'd like some help, I'd be more than happy to help out in any way.
Is there a reason that we don't want to have a committee to discuss this? Is, is there a reason that we wouldn't form a committee to discuss this? Like we just talked about.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't. I mean, I think it would actually be not a bad idea to just get some opinions out on the board in an informal setting where we can throw things back and forth.
No, nobody said that we're not going to have a committee. But I think Judy's recommendation that Jim and I start off as, as liaison. Linda's given us a lot of information that we can, for presentation purposes. But then from there, I think we absolutely should have a committee.
Okay. Great.
So Alan's eyes would be a fresh set of eyes. He'd go through things, pick things out that he and Jim would maybe be in agreement on. And then you'd present that to us, and we could tweak it and say what we liked, what we didn't like, give our input that way. But I think it, I think it's beneficial just to have that one person do it the first initial look over, just to gather that information, because you know the old saying, too many cooks.
Sure.
So maybe if we just start out with Alan, because he is the treasurer with Jim, that might be beneficial to everybody.
And I have extensive financial background.
Absolutely.
And I think we've got two excellent examples to use as a benchmark for the direction we want to go.
Yeah.
I think you gave us over a hundred pages, wasn't it?
Ninety-four.
Okay.
There were only two, two pages of things you should look at, so.
Yeah.
All right. And Jim, I did check the email. I, I did send to attachments, if there's a problem, you know.
I got two attachments.
Those were the only two attachments everybody has.
Just two attachments.
One of ninety-four pages.
One's really big. One of ninety-four pages.
So one contains multiple districts.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Ninety-four pages.
And the first one kind of highlights, here's what you ought to focus on, which could have made the second one twelve pages.
Okay. So I think we've got a plan to move forward with this?
I don't think there's anything we have to do, I mean, there's nothing we have to.
Just consensus.
Great.
Okay. So next would be Board Clerk's Report. Ms. Larson.
All right, thank you. Notice is hereby given that there is an election to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, April 6, 2021, and the following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. The term of the office for school board member is a three, is three years, beginning on Monday, April 26, 2021. School Board Member Larry Gamble, incumbent. School Board Member Claude Lewis, incumbent. School Board Member Ann Sapersky, incumbent. Notice is further given that a campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 5, 2021, in the office of the school district clerk, 8255 West Forest Hill Avenue, Franklin, Wisconsin. Notice is further given that if a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on Tuesday, February 16, 2021.
And I'd like to make a comment at this point regarding the upcoming elections. I've decided not to seek reelection and filed my paperwork of declaration of non-candidacy today. Item eight, the treasurer report, that's available in the Board Doc's library. Next would be the school board liaison reports. Larson.
The first policy on the agenda is Policy 6732, video used in the class, in classroom instruction. This is an action item. This policy was last reviewed in May of 2010, and the administration recommends eliminating this policy for the following reasons. It is not a required policy or recommended by WASB. The use of video and procedures related to rated or non-rated production is described in the student handbook. And the section of the policy relating to copyright limitations is redundant to Policy 6721, Copyright Applications to Instructional Materials. And I would be looking for a motion to eliminate this policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
The next policy we have on the agenda is Policy 4000, District Personnel Policies and Goals. This, too, is an action item. This policy was last reviewed in April of 2012. Mrs. Elihausen recommends revising this policy for the following reasons. The language is being updated to reflect our current practice and sets the direction for engaging our workforce as well as ensuring that our policies and legal requirements are both aligned. The priorities of this policy represent the focus of recruiting and retaining a talented workforce, which drives our mission statement and fosters the district values. So I would be looking for a motion to revise Policy 4000, District Personnel Policies and Goals.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Wackowski, second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion?
Yes. Paragraph one, the last sentence says, "The board expects that the implementation of approved policies is supervised by the Director of Human Resources." I do not expect the Director of Human Resources to implement all policies. That should either be personnel policies or something to identify that. Valley's not got all policies.
So certainly, we could amend that to say policies within the 4000 section. It, it probably might be best to say personnel-related, because there could be policies in other sections that do have implications in human resources. So approved personnel-related policies, would that satisfy?
How about the board expects that the implementation of approved human resource policies be supervised by the Director of Human Resources?
That works.
Question, item four, you changed it to monitoring the employee compensation plans, and it was before to develop an employee compensation program. So who develops the employee compensation?
So I would say that that falls within one. The development of them is under the recruitment and the retention priority of one. And then, once they're established through one, which one is a very broad priority that encompasses many different structures, frameworks, and systems. And from that point, it's a monitoring of it. If, but I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to it saying developing and monitoring. But again, it's got to meet a benchmark, and that benchmark ties right back to recruitment and retention.
I haven't, don't have a problem with that. I would just kind of want to be clear on where, where the employee compensation program fits in. And you're saying under one, ensuring systems, small lettered systems includes compensation plan?
Absolutely. You can't recruit and retain staff if that's not one of your systems.
I, I guess I would like to see, you know, develop and monitor in, in item four, to be clear, if everybody's in agreement.
Absolutely. It's your policy. It's what we do.
Responsibility there, so.
It's a pretty important function.
Motion to approve those changes.
Yeah, we should revise the motion to have the, so we'll be looking for a motion as revised in the opening paragraph and then paragraph four, how to get that rid of.
We have a motion as second, though, that we have to do something with. I'm looking at Mr. Cohen because he's really very good at this. We have to do something with that.
Yeah, the original person can withdraw the motion and then you can reissue the motion.
Or amend it, right?
Or amend, or you could offer friendly amendments.
That would be Linda.
Okay, with, with changes talked about or agreed to, approve it with the changes that we identified.
Okay.
And is your second still, we're still good. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of revision of this policy? Say aye.
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 And any opposed? Motion passes. Any board liaison reports?
I did attend two SWSA meetings. One was for school board members. That was last Friday. I will, I haven't shared that slide deck with you, but I will. It does kind of give you a sense of what's, what the issues are in different districts. One issue that came up was the subs are a real problem, but, and I did ask Judy if that was a concern here. I don't know if you want to repeat what you, it shared with you, but there seems to be really concerns about subs in other districts. But we have figured that out.
Right. So most recently, Ms. Elihausen was interviewed by a reporter from the Journal Sentinel and, and made comment regarding that. So I, I will defer to her to kind of share some of that. But what I did share with Ms. Wackowski was that we do have building subs. We're fortunate to have those, as well as Ms. Elihausen has created a protocol for who is called when there's a vacancy. And a number of our coaches are there, our system specialists are there, our directors are there. I'm even on the list to go into, fill these vacancies so that the children have our class. But I, I don't know what else you may want to add to that, but that is what I shared with Ms. Wackowski.
Certainly, the Journal Sentinel article wasn't just me. There were multiple districts. And it was certainly addressing the substitute shortage, which is a, a real shortage. But I would also say that that shortage existed pre-COVID. It is amplified in the current environment when you have fourteen-day-long absences. And our goal is to fill them in a consistent fashion because that's what we want for our kids. And so there's definite challenges. Dr. Reuter and I have put together an entire protocol around how do we prioritize in the system, which sounds value-based, but it really is just a matter of prioritization for the academic and, and well-being, safety and well-being of the kids when we need to put someone in third grade as opposed to potentially then not having art that day. And so there is a, there is a prioritization that we've put together. There are subbing protocols that he and I have worked on to make sure that we know when we are subbing, for example, with virtual staffing and when we're not, that is transparently communicated with the staff. The principals understand it, their assistants understand it, so that when we are in motion in the morning and, and having to deal with the complexity of a little puzzle between a team of us that starts with my department, Chris, and principals, we can assess the situation from systemic lens and then start to move those pieces around to ensure that we, we absolutely are going to be able to meet the needs of kids every day. There are days that are better than others, and we like the better days than the other days. And our staff have been really instrumental in the reassignments that have been taking place. They are, they are really pulling on the same end of the rope to make sure that we can meet the needs of kids every day. But it is a challenge. It's been a challenge. It will remain a challenge in the current labor market.
Thank you. So that was one topic covered. And also, we spent some time talking about superintendent evaluations. I think we're in a good place there compared to some districts. And WASB also has a new product that they're pitching for as a service to help with that. Also, the other meeting was, I think it was Tuesday. And that was the organizational meeting, and Judy was in that meeting also. And we have Children's Hospital comes in, gives an update on how things are going. I think there's something really new that we don't know that they've said, other than the, the vaccine is, is on its way. Then we also had another superintendent candidate, which is always interesting, but we're just only one person. I'm not sure why she's covering all of them, but interesting topics come up, what their perspectives are. And then lastly, we had the legislative update, which I think is, is pretty, pretty interesting. And I hope you, I did share that with you, and I know it's a big slide deck, but it's three slides, and there's some really interesting proposals that legislators have that are, you just wonder what they're thinking, things like. Things like, you want teachers back in the classrooms? They have to be back by January. They're going to legislate some of these actions. That's what their intent is. Or things like paying parents if they have virtual students. So there's some pretty different kind of ideas out there with legislators, so. And they're predicting it's going to be quite an interesting budget to grind. And I think, we don't do a lot of advocacy as a board, but I did notice that we do have a new senator in our area. So a brand-new person. I don't know of this person, but maybe we can reach out and, if, I don't know, I'll see what.
So this might be an opportunity just to quickly mention that Dr. Cohen and I have been talking about the resolution in AB nine oh eight, which was the bill that we took forward, which is going to be on our opportunity to connect with Representatives Skoronsky and Senator Bradley. So we will be doing that. And I've also spoken to Mr. Kafka about reaching out to our legislators more frequently to engage them in what we're doing in the district. So, agreed.
So that was all I have for that organization.
Anyone else? Then we'll move on to school and community engagement reports. Not much happening there, I know.
Well, there was the auction, the Franklin Education Auction. I won, one bid.
Congrats.
What did you win?
Win.
A basket.
I lost one, though. I should, I could have got it, I would have followed it closer. But it is, I mean, they're happening virtual. And I also know that Countrydale is having a silent auction as we speak, so you can get in on that. It's also virtual, so that's all I have as far as schools.
Okay. I wasn't at the last meeting. But we did have the Tim O'Brien Homes Open House and got to see the outstanding work that these students are putting into actually building a house and learning these trades and skills that go into, as you were mentioning earlier, Dr. Cohen, getting that experience of what they want to do later. And talking with some of these students, that's exactly what they were figuring out. One of them was, I knew I wanted to be in construction. Now I know which part of construction I want to be in. And so that was quite the experience they got out of it. And it's something that's going to stand for years and they can see somebody moving into something that they helped build with their hands. So that was pretty neat.
I would just add, in terms of school and community engagement, not that it's happened yet, but just generally speaking, pay attention to the SABR roar, and you can see the athletic events that are happening. But also, if you're feeling a lack of holiday spirit, there is going to be a choir concert next week, Thursday, which I think is the seventeenth, but I have to be sure. The choir has put together, or they'll be recording this coming week. So that'll be available. It'll start live streaming, I think, at seven o'clock on that night. So that would be a community engagement, school community engagement you could all participate in from your couch at home. They've done, they did one earlier this fall that was quite enjoyable, too. So if you need some holiday spirit. Thanks, that's my plug.
That should be very good. Okay. Next is I'll be looking for a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one D to review district safety plan and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C to discuss compensation of representative employees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
We need a roll call.
Oh, that's right. Yep, thank you.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alex Zandrovich?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Two-minute recess?
Yes. Item twelve on the agenda is school board debriefing. Do any board members have comments about tonight's meeting? Hearing none, future agenda items. Principal Action Plan Update for Ben Franklin, Countrydale, and Robinwood on January thirteenth. Review and discussion of, Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolutions, January thirteenth. Building and Grounds Annual Report, January thirteenth. Open Enrollment Seats, January twenty-seventh. Waiver for Hours of Instruction on January twenty-seventh. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alex Zandrovich.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wackowski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are, meeting is closed at seven, or nine forty. Do I have to say that again?
You're good, it's recorded.
Okay. All right. Item twelve on the agenda is school board debriefing. Do any board members have comments about tonight's meeting? Hearing none, future agenda items. Principal Action Plan Update for Ben Franklin, Countrydale, and Robinwood on January thirteenth. Review and discussion of Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolutions, January thirteenth. Building and Grounds Annual Report, January thirteenth. Open Enrollment Seats, January twenty-seventh. Waiver for Hours of Instruction on January twenty-seventh. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alex Zandrovich.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wackowski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are, meeting is closed at seven, or nine forty.